Okay. Okay, good morning. Well, welcome to the regular board meeting of San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, April the 23rd, 2013. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Groom?
President.
Supervisor Slocum?
Here.
Supervisor Tissier?
Here.
President Horsley?
Here. It's now time for public comment, for comments that are not on their regular agenda. We have today a couple. First one is Martin Fox, followed by Matt Grocott.
Good morning, President Horsley, honorable members of the Board, and my fellow veterans. Thank you for your service to the county. I am not on my knees today, but I am still begging for mercy on the persons living with mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment and their family members by having you vote for implementation of Laura's Law. Laura's Law is an outcome, positive outcome-producing procedure that creates a treatment-compliance behavioral situation that was certified to be effective, efficient, and economical by the United States Department of Justice. The San Diego County Psychiatric Emergency Response Team Experiment is the true name of the $2.1 million proposal, appearing as Consent Agenda Item Number 26. Replicating San Diego's PERT experiment will perpetuate the suffering of persons living with mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment by diverting resources from the creation of positive outcomes to filling out satisfaction surveys at a cost of $26,000 apiece. Laura's Law is a positive outcome-producing process that reflects the assumption of responsibility for public health and safety. Replicating San Diego's PERT experiment would reflect support for responsibility avoidance devices like the failed $1.2 million Family Service Agency of San Francisco's PREP program. Please have mercy on the persons living with mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment voluntarily and vote to implement Laura's Law. Please pull the $2.1 million San Diego PERT experiment, shown as Item 26 on the Consent Agenda. Table it and demonstrate a commitment to true positive outcomes. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Fox. Next one, Matt Grocott, from the great town of San Carlos, followed by Greg Conlin.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. I'm here today because I was asked to look at one of your items from your previous meeting on April 9th by one of our fellow constituents, someone who lives in San Carlos and was following this item. Item five, if you remember, was to create a supervisory district lines study committee and to approve an outreach budget. I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000. That was presented at your last meeting by the county manager. And then after that was done, after staff gave presentation, there were a few questions. Mr. Slocum asked questions about how the money might be spent. And then speakers were recognized, public speakers. Following the public speakers and somewhat in response to their concerns, Supervisor Tissier recommended adding Annie Loyah to the committee as an alternate member. And then that was seconded by Mr. Horsley. And there was a vote and things went on. The thing that I was asked to look at, and I viewed it online a number of times, the video, is was a motion ever made to approve the item, the initial item, the headline item, if you will? And from watching it, I don't think it ever was. No one ever stated, "I would like to, you know, move approval of Item Five as presented by staff," or so forth, with the addition or amendment to staff's report to add an alternate member. So it didn't look to me like that item was handled in the proper fashion with a motion and a second for the headline item. And I would like to see that come back to the Board of Supervisors and handled in the way that would be proper. Just since I, well, I don't have any time. I was going to address a few other items, but I'll pass on it. Thank you.
Okay, Matt. Mr. Byers, could you take a look, review that for us?
Well, you know, obviously, Mr., sorry, City Council member Grocott had the opportunity to review the tape and I haven't reviewed the tape. My memory of the, obviously, my memory of the events of that item were that the Board did, the intent of the Board, and I think the spirit of the Board, and I believe the words of the Board, but again, I'm going to memory, were to approve the recommendations of the county manager to appoint the district lines advisory committee, as recommended by county manager Malby, with one modification. And that was to add, I think, Annie Loyah as an alternate member. You know, that's my memory of the events and certainly the intent and spirit of the Board at the time. The, you know, whether, you know, looking at the minutes, just looking at the minutes briefly here, what you're about to approve on your consent agenda is Item Number 12. I think the minutes probably could be a little more clear in expressing that intent. What I would make a recommendation that the minutes that you're about to approve, that you make a clarification or modification to the minutes that might reflect that that was the motion of the Board. And so I would suggest maybe the following language, that the Board made a motion to approve the outreach budget and to approve recommendations of the county manager Malby to appoint members of the district lines study committee with one modification, that is to add Annie Loyah to the committee as an alternate member. And that would be my recommendation, that you, you know, you make that change to the minutes, if in fact that reflects what you believe to be the action at the time.
Okay. Thank you. The next speaker is Greg Conlin.
Well, in follow-up to that comment, I would suggest that you review the video and see what you did. And if you did not officially approve it, that you do that next meeting. But assuming that you do do that, I just want to comment on the process of that item because of the fact that the application did not designate a political party. And as a result, the committee excluded Republicans who represent 70,000 voters in the county. So I think if you're trying to redesign or redistrict a political district that you at least have representatives of one of the parties who represent over 20% of the voters, so that would be my suggestion. And I think, in fairness, that you appoint at least one Republican to that committee, if not two, in light of the 20% of the voters are representative of the Republican Party.
Thank you, Mr. Conlin. Did you have a comment? Supervisor Groom?
Mr. Byers, is it appropriate for us to explain the process that we followed?
You certainly can make a, you're entitled on the ground act to make a brief response to a comment by a member of the public.
The candidates for the redistricting committee were submitted by application. We did not recruit those members. Applications were submitted and the San Mateo County League of Women Voters reviewed those applications and made recommendations to this Board and to the county manager. So we did not solicit, anyone did not recruit anyone.
I also note that the application process was completely a nonpartisan effort. It was not a question on the application about party affiliation. It was, anyone was free to apply, any party, any member of any parties were free to apply. And it was not a question on the application. So again, it wasn't something that staff had even looked at when it was calling through the applications. And no one, no one looked at one's background to see what their party affiliation was. It was sort of a non-issue. Anyone's free to apply.
Sure.
Then I'd argue that the application was flawed. I mean, you're trying to redistrict political process and political parties is certainly the most important part. Not to have that on the application, I think, would be an error.
Okay. Now that we're finished with the public comment, we'll now go to setting the agenda to and to approve the consent agenda. I'm going to remove two items, Item 30 and 37. Table both of those items for now.
And the modification I suggested on Item, on the minutes, is that part of your motion?
Well, it's part of my motion as well to also include the language that you suggested on the minutes of the meeting, the last meeting. I don't think I could repeat them exactly, but if you could.
Hopefully, it was stated clearly for the record what my suggested clarification was.
Are there any other changes? Do I? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item is Item Number One. It's a presentation, resolution honoring the 75th Legal Operations Detachment Army Reserve Unit Supervisor Warren Slocum. And I see Colonel John Niblin in the audience.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Saturday, Lieutenant Colonel Niblin organized a celebration of the 75th Legal Operations Detachment up at Fort Point. And it was a 5K run. The title of the run was, I thought, very appropriate. It was called "Two Times a Citizen," celebrating the fact that we do have citizen soldiers like Lieutenant Colonel Niblin and others who served this country. And I had the good fortune to be there. As a Vietnam veteran and E5 sergeant, I got to sit next to a real general, which was quite an honor. But also, the commander, Colonel Wallace, presented me with an Army Medal on Saturday. And I'll just pass that down so you can admire that. Don't put that in your pocket. And it was a very successful event. There were wounded warriors there. There were a lot of families, a lot of food. And I think it was the first time since my Vietnam service that I had been reunited, so to speak, with my Army past and my Army family. And I really appreciated and was honored to be there with you both to help celebrate that. And I really appreciated Colonel Wallace's kind words. And I enjoyed talking to the general, whose name I forgot. But with respect, of course. So if, let me introduce to you Lieutenant Colonel Niblin. Of course, you all know him as County Council John Niblin. And also, the unit commander for the 75th Legal Operations Detachment, Sergeant Christian Sepulveda, who, by the way, is an Iraqi veteran and serves as the unit administrator for that legal operations detachment. So with that.
I'll move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that.
Did you get that in the record? With that, I'm going to present this again to you. This is a resolution adopted by the Board of Supervisors of San Mateo County. And let me just read one or two of the lines here. It says, "Whereas among the key contributions made by our country's Army colleagues, the members of the 75th Legal Operations Detachment have made countless sacrifices for our country in order to provide the men and women that serve our country solace and peace of mind whilst away from their loved ones, while also engaging in combat whenever necessary, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors that honor and commend the 75th Legal Operations Detachment and its members for dedicating their lives to the greater good of our nation on behalf of all the citizens of San Mateo County. The Board of Supervisors expresses its deep appreciation for the contributions to the community made by your unit and thank you for the service of your country and extend every death, rape, and death penalty. Thank you so much."
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to actually yield the mic here to Sergeant Sepulveda in just a second. But I did want to thank the honorable Board of Supervisors for this resolution and Supervisor Slocum in particular for joining us on Saturday. We, as a reserve unit that has been here in the Bay Area for about 50 years with members drawn from the county of San Mateo, and a few of us, in fact, employed by the county, just want to communicate that we can't do what we do, we can't perform the missions that we're assigned without the support of local government, without the support of our employers. So it's with a great deal of gratitude that we, again, recognize the resolution and that we recognize and thank you for the support that we receive. I want to thank my boss in particular, the county council, John Byers, for supporting me over the years and the work I do for the reserves. And again, we're very, very cognizant of how important your partnership is in the work we do. So thanks very much.
Thank you to the President. Thank you to the Board members. All I would like to say is it is very humbling to receive a recognition. So on behalf of 75th LOD soldiers, I would actually like to thank you, thank the citizens that support us, because without your support, we couldn't do our job. Keep in mind that whenever we're gone, it is you guys that keep everything back here going and, you know, feeding that support to us when we're downrange. So I want to thank citizens, our family members. And again, it is very humbling to receive a recognition like this. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And thank both of you. And thank both of you for your service. And I would suggest when you go to court next time, you'll wear that uniform. Great.
Can I ask Mr. Slocum a question? Did you run the race?
The question was, did I run the race? Well, you know I have a bad knee.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, what a great excuse.
No.
Next is a presentation of a proclamation designating April 2013 as National Poetry Month Supervisor Warren Slocum.
This proclamation serves to designate April 2013 as National Poetry Month. And I think it's important to note that we celebrate poetry because frankly, it enriches the lives of all of us and all of our countrymen and women. Poetry has produced some of our country's leading creative artists and has inspired other artists in the field such as music, theater, film, dance, and the visual arts. And who from my generation can forget Bob Dylan? The celebration of poetry is important to inspire the future creative minds to write prose and continue our rich body of works in the field of the humanities. I have six quick reasons, six quick reasons why all of us should read poetry. Number one, poetry doesn't take too long to read. Reminds me of Letterman's.
Why is that number one?
Letterman's Top Ten here. Poetry improves your vocabulary. Number three, poetry gives you new ideas. Four, poetry shows the world in a new light. Five, poetry always makes you think. And six, poetry is fun. So this morning, we're going to have, I think, three poetry readings. One by Supervisor Groom, one by myself. And then I would like to introduce to you Maureen Kilho. Did I say that right, Maureen?
Kiloh.
Kiloh. Who moved to San Mateo in 1996 with her husband, lives in San Mateo in a home that was built in the 1890s, actually. And as proof of it's never too late to start writing poetry, Maureen, at the age of 50, began writing poetry. And last year, she was honored at the San Mateo County Fair. She won first place and Best of Show for her poem, "Flaming Inspiration." She's published several of her works in small publications and eBooks and continues to publish poems on her blog. She sings in the Peninsula Musical Arts Association Choir. And her husband plays the bass for the Peninsula Symphony, so a real art family. And there's one thing that I'd just like to announce, and Maureen doesn't know this, and it's a total surprise to her. Drum roll. But Maureen has won first and second prize in poetry for the upcoming June 2013 San Mateo County Fair. So congratulations, Maureen. And Maureen, if you could come to the microphone, and she's going to read one of her original poems.
Good morning. Wow, how can I read after that kind of news? I didn't even know they did the, they even read them yet.
Well, they did.
Wow. Wow. All right, thank you. All right. I'm going to read a poem this morning that was inspired when I was walking along the rugged coastline here in Northern California. And any of you who have ever been out to Half Moon Bay when it's all socked in, hopefully you can relate to this. It's called "Mendocino in an Eggshell." "The sky is a solid eggshell, no cracks to permit sunrays to shine in. Salt vapors crisp in my nose, drench my paper walls, dissolving the mood that was trailing me. Mother sea baptizes the shore over and over and over again, until the shore also releases whatever it's been holding on to, leaving a blank beach of sand curving hollows beneath me. The stillness in the air stills my spirit. But then, the chilly fog, vertigo cliffs, and hatcheting waves strike me so close I can embrace the terror and loneliness reflected in the raw metallic water and colorless sky. I am afraid but mesmerized in love, yet I shrivel in the face of this gigantic beauty and power that pounds and cleanses and forces me out of the eggshell limits of my own little world."
Beautiful. Thank you. That was, that was great. Thank you for reading that. Thank you for coming. Supervisor Groom?
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for doing this Supervisor Slocum. When I was in school, I was, couldn't sing, couldn't draw, but I could, I could read. And so I became kind of a fan of poetry. But I think the moment for me was when Robert Frost, at the inauguration of John Fitzgerald Kennedy, stood in that wind cold snow in Washington and read a poem. And it suddenly occurred to me that poetry was something for all of us, not just people who couldn't sing and couldn't draw. And so I brought one of my favorite Robert Frost poems today to read. It's called "The Road Not Taken." And it begins, "Two roads diverged in a yellow wood, and sorry I could not travel both. And be one traveler, long I stood, and looked down one as far as I could to where it bent in the undergrowth. Then took the other as just as fair, and having perhaps the better claim, because it was grassy and wanted wear. Though as for that, the passing there had worn them really about the same. And both that morning equally lay, in leaves no step had trodden black. Oh, I kept the first for another day. Yet knowing how way leads on to way, I doubted if I should ever come back. I shall be telling this with a sigh, somewhere ages and ages hence. Two roads diverged in a wood, and I, I took the one less traveled by, and that has made all the difference."
Beautiful. Very nice.
Thank you, Supervisor Groom. I'll make a confession, my poem is not nearly as sophisticated. My poem that I've selected for, to share this morning is about a dog. And everybody has got to love dogs, right?
We all love dogs.
We all love dogs. And this is a poem written by my favorite poet, who's Billy Collins. And it's called "Dharma." "The way the dog trots out the front door every morning, without a hat or an umbrella, without any money or the keys to her doghouse, never fails to fill the saucer of my heart with milky admiration. Who provides a finer example of a life without encumbrance? Thoreau in his curtainless hut with a single plate, a single spoon? Gandhi with his staff and holy diapers? Off she goes into the material world with nothing but her brown coat and her modest blue collar, following only her wet nose. The twin portals of her steady breathing followed only by the plume of her tail. Only she did not, if only she did not shove the cat aside every morning and eat all his food. What a model of self-containment she would be, what a paragon of earthly detachment. If only she were not so eager for a rub behind the ears, so acrobatic in her welcomes. If only I were not her God." Thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
That was beautiful.
Thank you.
In any case, there is one speaker in this, Jim Clifford.
I read in the paper that they're going to try to get a poet laureate. I just want to commend you for that, because every day, every weekend when I pick up the literary guide, I see nothing between San Francisco and Kepler's for appearances. And I think it's time we brought poetry and prose to the forefront. The big-box stores don't do it. They won't have local authors, they don't have local poets, they don't host them. Our libraries, fairly good, but they can be really improved. And I'd like to read a poem, if it's okay.
Yes.
It's not one of mine. I've written them, but this is not one of my poems. And it's called "Sweet Memories, Dorothy Evelyn La Prete." I think she died last year. I passed away. And I read it and kept it because I'm from San Francisco, it reminded me of the foghorns in San Francisco. She was from Half Moon Bay, she would have been a great poet laureate. It's called "Sweet Memories." "The moaning of the foghorn, the softest of the mist, the dampened smell of concrete, the yearning of a kiss, turns loving into needing and hastening into a trace. Where love is consummated in the passion of a kiss. Oh, foghorn, you tormentor of days so long gone by, you still ignite sweet memories too ardent to deny. Now days grow short, my sleep comes fast, all passions cooled, all fires dashed. Sweet dreams of meadows, of larks and song, cooling shadows calm and long. Do end my day and calm my sleep, as I give God my soul to keep." So keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Thanks. Beautiful. Especially appreciated from a poet from Half Moon Bay. The, next one. Next presentation is a proclamation designated April 21st through 27th, 2013, as National Crime Victims Rights Week. And it's, I'm the presenter. So in any case, I'm going to make a motion to approve the proclamation. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have you been in law enforcement for a long time, obviously, like 35 years? Thinking about crime victims, I think, most people think of, you know, you see something in a newspaper about somebody who's been a victim of a crime, and that's kind of the end of it for you, for the reader, that is. But for the person who's the victim of the crime, that's not the end of it. It goes on. It's, it's like being victim for a long period of time. And the hurt, the pain, the feeling of violation goes on for a very long period of time. And so it's really important for us and for our system to make sure that victims are really recognized and that they get the kind of services that they need to be able to recover from, from being victims of crimes. In any case, this actually started, it was really, came out of the President's Task Force in actually 1982, and subsequently has been something that is on a Force in actually 1982, and subsequently has been something that is on a national scale as well as local and state. So here, to accept the proclamation is Becky Redondo, or Redondo, that is. Becky, would you come forward?
members. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Becky Redondo, and I am the new manager of the Victim Services Unit with the District Attorney's Office. On the behalf of the Victim Services Unit, I am honored today to receive this proclamation designating this week from April 21st through April 27th as the National Crime Victims Rights Week. Each year on a national basis, a week is set aside to commemorate and honor crime victims, celebrate their courage, and acknowledge their struggle for justice. Only 30 years ago, crime victims had no rights. No access to crime, victim compensation, and no services to help rebuild their lives. They were often excluded from courtrooms, treated as an afterthought by the criminal justice system, and denied an opportunity to speak at sentencing. National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to revisit our history, celebrate our achievements, and advance the progress of victims' rights. The 2013 theme that the Office of Victims Crimes chose is "New Challenges, New Solutions." This theme reflects the increasingly complex mission of victims' advocates today. National Crime Victims Rights Week reminds us that many challenges remain. We face emergency, emerging challenges such as changing demographics, immigration, human trafficking, terrorism, new types of crimes, and the use of technology both to commit and solve crimes. However, through decades, decades of advocacy and hard work, we have come a long way. Today, all states have enacted crime victims' rights laws and established crime victim compensation funds. More than 10,000 victim services agencies help victims throughout the nation. Meeting these challenges requires insight and innovation. Our hard work to ensure the rights of victims, prevent future violence, and reach all victims has never been more urgent than it is today. National Crime Victims Rights Week showcases the challenge creativity, knowledge, and experience of victim serving professionals throughout the nation. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge extremely dedicated, talented, creative, and knowledgeable victim services staff here in the county of San Mateo, who work day in and day out to assist numerous victims of violent crimes in our county. The Victim Services Unit is comprised of 13 employees. Some of them are here today, and some were not able to join us today, given that they are busy working with our victims as I speak right now. For the victim services employees that could join us, I would like to request that you all stand so that you can receive proper acknowledgement today. I would like to close by stating that we appreciate the board's support of the Victim Services Unit and the victims we serve. Thank you for your time this morning, and thank you once again for the proclamation.
Thank you, Becky. Actually worked with Becky a long time on the Domestic Violence Council, and glad to see her in a new position. I see Steve Wagstaff and Karen Guddati in the audience as well. Thanks for the work that you guys do.
President Horsley, if I may, going back to item number two, which is the presentation of a proclamation designating April as National Poetry Month, unless I'm not recalling correctly, I think the board still needs to make a motion to approve that proclamation.
Didn't we make that motion?
Adrian did.
Adrian did.
Adrian did? Did we? Why don't we do it again, just in case?
Becky, do you recall the motion?
Supervisor Slocum, why don't you make the motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we designate April as...
And I will heartily second your motion.
National Poetry Month.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Byers, for reminding us. Don't want to have that again. Any case, the next one is item number four, presentation of a proclamation designating May 2013 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Supervisor Dave Pine.
Thank you, President Horsley. If we could have a motion to accept this proclamation, designating May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I beat you to it.
As we all know, mental health, you know, is a leading cause of disabilities in our, in our country, and affects upwards of one in four adults and children in any given year. We've come a long way in this, in this field. You know, it wasn't that long ago where mental health didn't receive nearly any attention. It was considered personal weakness, or something that really couldn't be dealt with very effectively. And fortunately, our county and others have proven that people can recover and have very, very productive lives. But there's much work to be done, particularly in the area of stigma. And for that reason, it's appropriate to call attention to mental health during the month of May, and our, there'll be a number of events throughout, throughout May for that purpose. So I would like to ask Stephen Kaplan, our Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, and Elizabeth Corneo James, one of our residents, if, to accept this proclamation, and they may have a few words.
Mr. Malpigh. I'll be brief, and I'm gonna turn it over to Elizabeth. She has the important things to say. I just want to thank the board for the resolution. Supervisor Pine said this really is important as we continue to try to address issues of stigma, which really create a pall over many things for people that have mental health challenges in terms of coming out and, and seeking services. I also want to recognize this board and your predecessors for your support of what we do. You're exemplary in the state. I have an opportunity frequently to talk with my colleagues from other counties, and when we kind of compare notes about boards, we do that. And who's supporting what, and how much, and all of that. This board truly does stand out, not just currently, but historically, and that makes a world of difference. I want you to know that your staff in Behavioral Health and Recovery Services and our community partners work hard every single day with significant challenges to try to help people achieve the highest quality of life possible. As Supervisor Pine says, we do well, but we have a lot of work to do and a lot of improvements to make, and we're working hard to do that. So I want to thank you for all the support that you give our department and our community providers in our community. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Elizabeth for the real important words.
I am so honored to be here and speaking in front of you all today. Accepting that I was bipolar after being diagnosed at age 18 was extremely difficult. Yet, living in a society where there existed so many stereotypes, misconceptions, and unawareness of what it is truly, what it truly means to have a mental health diagnosis was excruciatingly painful. What I have just described can be summed up in one word: stigma. Stigma, a mark of disgrace, is what so many people with mental health diagnosis feel has been placed upon them. Stigma forces so many to hide their diagnosis from their friends, from their family, and in some instances can cause a mental health diagnosed individual to refuse to seek mental health services because of what will, what people will say, what people will think, and then potentially, and then the potential of bringing disgrace to their family. This was the case for me. It took four years after steady recovery for me to have the strength and courage to tell my loved ones. When I finally did tell them, they accepted me with open arms, and it was so freeing because I felt that I did not have to hide or be ashamed of my diagnosis. However, this was not always the case. In the past, I had had horrible experiences with individuals who I had disclosed my diagnosis to. They treated me with looks of shock and bewilderedness due to the, their preconceived notions as to what a person with a mental health diagnosis should look like and would be capable of doing. Approximately 25% of American adults, half of them women, half of them men, suffer from a mental disorder. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, reports that the majority of adults with diagnosable mental disorders don't receive treatment, even though psychotherapy and medication are effective in 80 to 90% of individuals. Some people may ask, how is this possible? How can a mental health diagnosed individual not want to seek services and get well? Yet, for many, the power of stigma outweighs the need for mental health services, no matter how great the need may be, or how good the mental health care system is. The CDC's Office of Minority Health Disparities reports that 70% of adults with mental health symptoms believe that treatment would help them to lead normal lives. However, a person with unmet mental health needs will very often refuse to use these services, no matter how effective or well-intentioned, as long as stigma is present. Stigma is real. I remember when I first began seeking services with San Mateo County. I would never go through the front doors because I was worried of people seeing me and judging me, just like the other individuals had. And the only, and the only reason I kept coming back is, was because my providers were so kind to me, and they wanted to work with me. And they honestly gave me hope that this experience, my psychiatric event, would pass. In America, there is a need for mental health services, yet institutions providing mental health services are viewed with suspicion and avoided. Some may ask, why is this? The reality is that mental illness in our society is not viewed as any other diagnosable condition like cancer, diabetes. It is incredibly stigmatized and seen as abnormal. Yet according to a 2005 study, more than a quarter of Americans each year will have some diagnosable mental disorder. That's a lot of people. Almost 50% of Americans, 46.4%, to be exact, will have a diagnosable mental illness in their lifetime. Based on the previous edition of the DSM-IV, this statistic highlights that a mental health diagnosis is not abnormal. It is normal and deserves to be treated with compassion and seriously, just like any other medical condition. Mental health diagnosed individuals are our neighbors, friends, loved ones, colleagues. Yet many people who take medications do not disclose this information because of fear of negative judgment. They deserve to receive the help they need without the fear of or implication it may have on their lives. In the aftermath of violent, violent massacres in Newton, Connecticut, Aurora, Colorado, Tucson, Arizona, considerable media and legislative attention have been paid to issues of gun control and underfunded mental health care systems. A false connection is being made between mental health problems and gun violence. Studies show that people with mental illness are involved in 4% of violent crimes, and are 11 times as likely as the general population to be victims of violent crimes. When people with mental illness, oh, sorry. When people with mental illness are dangerous, it is most often directed at themselves. I remember watching these shootings on the news and listening to the reporters say over and over again, the individual has mental problems, this individual is mentally unstable. My mother interpreted this, these words and said, see what happens when people don't take their medication. I explained to her that these individuals are not under treatment, and that they may not have a diagnosable condition. Yet based on how the media was portraying the attacks, my mother's assumptions brought to my attention that she may not be the only one watching these events and drawing that same assumption. I feel that having a mental health diagnosis was at times truly painful and traumatic experience, and stigma around my diagnosis was heartbreaking and made an already difficult situation even worse. Yet, it has made me a stronger individual, because being able to overcome such trauma and stigma made me realize that I can do anything. Today, at age 27, I have done everything I had ever dreamed of, and so much more. I have graduated with a Bachelor's of Science in Human Services from the University of Notre Dame, Denimary University. I have my own car, I work, and I am completely off government assistance. I can truly say I love my life. I am a survivor of my mental health diagnosis and of stigma that has been placed around in this society. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, it's great. Not easy to do. But in any case, you have two speakers, Martin Fox, followed by Greg Wild.
Thank you, President Horsley, honorable members of the board. Please do what you did last year, and dispense with celebrating Mental Health Awareness Month next year. Mental illnesses are biologically based disorders that are nobody's fault, and the stigma associated with no-fault biological diseases like prostate cancer in men and women with breast cancer was eradicated when cures began to be found years ago. The promotion of anti-stigma exercises actually perpetuates the same thing for people living with mental illness who are really suffering from discrimination. Mental Health Awareness Month celebrations divert attention and resources from the mental illness of patients who need treatment to recover from untreated bipolar or schizophrenia that turns them into homeless people who wear smelly clothing and forage through garbage cans looking for food while talking to their hallucinations. The celebrations are conducted by so-called mental health experts who call those who voluntarily seek treatment, consumers, and ignore the mentally ill whose condition is complicated by anosognosia. People living with serious mental illness almost always self-identify by making delusional explanations, engaging in psychotic ramblings, and establishing ritualistic behaviors, just like those that you can see right up here on the corner of Veterans and Whipple. like those that you can see right up here on the corner of Veterans and Whipple. Mental Health Awareness Month is based on the false premise that the major problem we face is that people living with serious mental illnesses will not self-identify. Go up and look at the corner. Please use Prop sixty-three Mental Health Services Act to provide funds for treatment to persons living with serious mental illness and implement Laura's law.
President Horsley and members of the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to thank you very much for cre- claiming May to be Mental Health Awareness Month. Actually, it should be every month until this group of illnesses is finally eradicated. Um, I speak both as a family member. I had two generations of my family, my father, his mother, who had mental illness before I was born. I had mental illness in the nineties, and thanks to all the treatment and support here in San Mateo County, I was able to completely beat it, and I've been symptom-free for the last thirteen years. I've since become a provider, and thanks to all of your support, and tha- thanks for all you do for Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Part of that support has trickled down to us, and for the last eight years, I've been Executive Director of a consumer-run organization called Heart and Soul that, through our five self-help centers, we provide a lot of support to people with mental illness, skills groups, and whatever we can think of, based on the personal understanding that we've all walked the walk. And through our organization that's been around for twenty-two years, Stamp Out Stigma, we go out and speak a lot about what it's like to have a mental illness and help break down some of the stigma, both here in San Mateo County and outside the county. And I agree that I think, like to thank Elizabeth, the, a lot of what you do by making, proclaiming a month Mental Health Awareness Month is take away the isolation and the stigma, because I think that's so critical and such a big roadblock to going out and wanting to get well. So again, thank you all very much for what you do, and I'm a very strong believer that someday, mental illness will be something we talk about only as history, because I do believe with the right work and dedication, it's gonna be someday preventable or curable. So there's my two minutes.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
And thanks, Elizabeth, as well. And just to tell you a, a quick story from my family, my grandmother had a nervous breakdown and ended up spending the rest of her adult life in Napa State Hospital. My family was, uh, on my mother's side, it was a Italian family from Italy, and they, they, what they said is that she died, and, uh, they never acknowledged that she was alive. And so she spent the rest of her life, uh, locked up in Napa State Hospital. I remember visiting her, um, as a child, that's, in any case, uh, stigma is real, and, uh, and it is a good thing to be working on overcoming. So, go on to the next item, is a presentation of a proclamation designated May fourth and fifth, two, twenty thirteen, Streets Alive, Parks Alive, Weekend in San Mateo County, Supervisor Carol Grill.
Thank you, President Horsley. Um, I'm pleased to announce the, uh, Fourth Annual Streets Alive, Parks Alive will be held on the weekend of May the fourth and May the fifth. I'm doubly pleased to tell that we have twelve cities this year: Belmont, Burlingame, Colma, Daly City, Foster City, Milbrae, Pacifica, Redwood City, San Bruno, San Mateo, and South San Francisco. We also have, uh, three unincorporated areas participating: Kenyatta Road, El Granada, and North Fair Oaks. So, uh, brings us to fifteen events this year on the weekend of, of May fourth and May fifth. I'd like to thank our financial sponsors, Mills Peninsula Health Services, the Peninsula Healthcare District, the Sequoia Healthcare District. In addition, we have great in-kind support from Kaiser, Samtrans, Recology, the Hospital Consortium of San Mateo County, as well as Seton and Daly City. I'd like to thank, um, all of the supervisors' offices for, for helping us and, and working hard to make sure that we, that this gets going. And now I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask Jan Kamen from Seton, Julia Bott from the Park Foundation, Connie Sevier from the Park Foundation, and Marge Colapietro from the City of Milbrae to accept this proclamation.
Thank you very much for having us here today, and thank you Supervisor Groom for supporting Streets Alive, Parks Alive. In the past, Seton Medical Center has been involved with Streets Alive, Parks Alive, and perhaps we might have put up a table, put a tablecloth on it, and provided some, uh, blood pressure screenings. This year, we decided, what can we do that's a little bit different? So this year, we decided to have a community event, Seton Caring for Our Community, and we wondered if that's going to go. Let me tell you how successful it is. We have fifteen departments at Seton Medical Center that are gonna come out on a Saturday. They're gonna provide cholesterol screening, blood pressure screenings, we're going to have a community walk, we're going to have the recreation department, we're gonna teach people about brown rice and white rice. In addition to that, we have ten businesses that are going to be participating. In addition to that, we have another fifteen community service programs that are going to be involved in the program. So I wanna thank all of you, I wanna thank you Supervisor Groom for crusading this event every year, and the success that we're seeing in North County is phenomenal. Thank you so very much.
Thanks, Jan.
I also have a flyer that... Thank you.
Thanks, Jan. There's a couple of speakers on us, Marge Colapietro, and, uh, from the great city of Milbrae, and, uh, Julia Bott.
Good morning, President, Board President Horsley and Honorable Board Members. Thank you for, um, presenting this proclamation. I first of all want to thank Supervisor Carol Gloom- Groom and her entire staff and all of the county agencies for all the enthusiasm and working hard, uh, on supporting this event. I would like to invite you all to, uh, come to Milbrae on Sunday, May fifth, from one thirty to five P.M. We have our Milbrae Streets Alive, Parks Alive. It's an event that's free to everyone. I encourage you, if you'd like, um, to, uh, take BART, or Caltrain, or Samtrans, and, uh, let you know that this is a family and pedestrian safety, uh, friendly event. We're going to have, in the line of physical fitness, we're going to have a bike rodeo for youth, we're going to have Jazzercise demonstrations, Zumba demonstrations, martial arts demonstrations, twenty-four hour fitness demonstrations, Tai Chi demonstration. We're also having available information tables by, uh, alternatives for driving our cars, including BART, Caltrain, Samtrans, and Commute.org. We're going to have, uh, leisurely activities such as American line dancing, belly dancing, tap and jazz, music and song, and a great band is going to be there. And we could not do this without the tremendous support and, um, from Supervisor Groom, from the department, and, uh, from the sponsors that we've been able to, to have with us. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Marge.
President Horsley, members of the board, I'm Julia Bott with the San Mateo County Parks Foundation, and once again, I want to acknowledge San Mateos County's vision for closing a road decades ago, once a week, um, for fitness and recreational activities. Um, and we are pleased, again, to, um, bring Streets Alive, Parks Alive to Bicycle Sunday, um, and we're gonna be actually using the Pulgas Water Temple parking lot for a bike skills course, and, um, tying that into Bike to Work Day and Bike to School Day, which is gonna follow the week after Streets Alive. Um, so we're reaching out to the community to have them come and practice their skills before they actually take it to the streets. Thank you.
Thanks, Julia. It's probably important for a lot of people to practice their skills on a bike. So thanks, uh, thanks Supervisor Groom for organizing that. Uh, next is, uh, item number six, it's a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the issuance of the California Municipal Financing Authority of Revenue Bonds for the Benefit of a Limited Partnership, et cetera, et cetera, formed by Mid Peninsula Housing Corporation.
President Horsley, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce this item, if I may. Uh, the, thank you. The California Municipal Finance Authority, or otherwise known as the CMFA, was created in two thousand and four. Uh, it is a joint powers authority, uh, made up of, of over a hundred and seventy-five municipalities, uh, including, including San Mateo County, we are a member. The, uh, purpose of the CMFA is to promote economic development, as all of you, uh, probably know. Um, and as such, an eligible borrower, which can be a public agency or a nonprofit, uh, as I understand it, can request that the CMFA, uh, serve as a municipal issuer of bonds. Here before you today, uh, on this item, um, it is, uh, Mid Penn Housing Corporation that has requested that the CMFA serve as the municipal issuer of bonds in the amount of fourteen million dollars for the purpose of financing two projects. Uh, one for the acquisition and, and improvements of a twenty-three unit multifamily housing development at seventeen sixty-one Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto, and the second project, uh, is a twenty-six unit multifamily development at forty-four through forty-eight Newell in East Palo Alto. Now, as you probably recall from similar items, uh, in the past, uh, the county's role is, is twofold in these instances. Uh, first, uh, in, in order for, uh, all or a portion of the bonds qualify as tax-exempt under federal law, uh, the county, uh, as the CMFA member, uh, within whose jurisdiction the project is, is, is cited, must hold what is known as a TAFRA hearing. Uh, this TAFRA hearing, in fact, has been properly and, uh, legally noticed, uh, for, for this morning at nine o'clock. And what that hearing does is it gives an opportunity for members of, of the public to, uh, and the community to, to speak, uh, for or, or against the financing of these two parti- particular projects. Second, after you close the public hearing, uh, you are asked to consider adopting a, uh, a resolution approving the, uh, issuance by the CMFA of the revenue bonds, uh, for the borrower, which again is Mid, uh, Mid Penn Housing Corporation. Uh, and to be clear, in, in approving, if the board were to approve that resolution, uh, the county takes on no financial obligation or any, you know, debt or other, other legal liabilities. Uh, the county does, uh, receive a twenty-five, does receive twenty-five percent of the issuance fee, uh, from the CMFA, which, uh, in this case is eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Um, I believe, or at least I have been told, that, uh, representatives of Mid, of Mid Penn and the CMFA may, may in fact be here in the audience today, uh, if you have any particular questions about the, the project or the financing. So, that's my report.
Any questions on this item? Uh, have a motion to close the public hearing?
Shall move.
Second. Uh, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, a...
I'll move to, uh, consider the resolution approving the issuance of the C- CF- CMFA, uh, revenue bonds for Mid Peninsula.
For a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, next item is for the District Attorney's Number Seven Resolution, make a motion to approve that resolution to hire retired Deputy District Attorney L. Giannini. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? No comments in that case, uh, on favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Waxstaff. Uh, next one is the County Manager, Item Eight, the Measure A Report Back Park Strategic Plan and Devil Slide.
Mr. President, members of the board, this is a first of a series of, um, Measure A Report Backs that the board will be receiving between, uh, now and, um, August, and it is also combined with the Park Strategic Plan and, uh, Devil Slide, um, project. Uh, and we have a brief presentation, uh, that we would like to make to the board, then I know that you will, um, be receiving public comment. So if we could cue the PowerPoint? The, um, Park Strategic Plan has been a process that has been underway for, uh, many months. Uh, it, uh, included, um, uh, public stakeholder and staff input and surveys. Uh, we've benchmarked, um, uh, various aspects of, uh, Park's operation with other, uh, agencies, um, and we have, um, uh, brought this, uh, plan, uh, to the Parks and Recreation Commission on, on two occasions, uh, for comment. Uh, the first time, uh, based on comment, there was, um, a, a number of revisions made to the plan, uh, and the final, uh, review by the Parks, uh, Commission, uh, was at the beginning of March. Supervisors, uh, Horsley and Pine have formed an ad hoc subcommittee in which they work very closely with the public and members of the staff and the development, uh, of this plan and the various, uh, iterations that, um, have, uh, undergone change, uh, since it was first, uh, developed. And of course, uh, for several weeks now, uh, the final draft has been available, uh, online for public review. There are four major goals in the Park Strategic Plan: stewardship, community engagement, environmental literacy, uh, and fiscal, uh, management. The plan is intended, uh, to be a five-year plan, and the implementation in the first year, uh, is recommended to include the re-establishment of a Parks Department, which would, uh, include the add, addition of a Parks Director and Executive Secretary. As the board is aware, uh, for several years, the Parks Department has been, uh, a part of the Public Works Department. Uh, this was done by the board, um, for reasons, uh, of economy. Um, there were certainly some, uh, fiscal advantages to that, but also, as we came to learn in the Park Strategic Planning Process, uh, some disadvantages as well. And we think now is an appropriate time, uh, to make the recommendation to re-establish the Parks Department as a separate standalone, uh, department. Uh, also included i- in the plan, uh, will be the reopening of, um, uh, Parks facilities and the maintenance and construction of, uh, projects that were deferred during the last, uh, five years. This includes the addition of a, uh, Natural Resource Manager, uh, and two rangers, uh, for maintenance and capital projects. Uh, it also includes the addition of two rangers, um, that will be part of the, uh, operation of Devil Slide, um, once it is, um, refurbished a- and, and open to the public. So there's a total of seven positions, uh, that, um, we are recommending, uh, for tentative approval, uh, be, um, adopted by the board for Measure A funding and, and will be part of the final Measure A report back to the board if, and if approved, uh, by the board, uh, the, the budget for the next fiscal year. We think this provides, um, a base, uh, for the, uh, Parks, um, Department to get up and running, uh, that will be sustainable, uh, and ongoing, and also give the new director of the, um, uh, Parks Department an opportunity to review the organization, uh, and to make further recommendations, uh, regarding the actual implementation of the Parks, uh, for year two. Um, among the things that, uh, we believe the new director will do is to develop an operations plan that will take into account, uh, concepts of the agile workforce, uh, facility management options, uh, new revenue generation, uh, opportunities.
Are those two little kids the agile workforce?
That could be, part of it. It's, they're never too, uh, too early to, to, to start. Prioritized, uh, maintenance lists, as you know, there's a very, very long, uh, list of deferred maintenance, and they have to be undertaken in a logical, sequenced way, uh, in order to, uh, begin to bring the parks back, uh, to the level that they once were. Uh, there's also a need for equipment and vehicle replacement, uh, and the adoption of schedules relating to that, and of course, a, a five-year capital improvement plan. relating to that, and of course, a five-year capital improvement plan. So, in summary, what this recommendation includes from a financial standpoint is the addition of seven positions and related expenditures for about $1 million. Maintenance work, what we would regard as deferred maintenance, a variety of projects in the Parks for about $700,000, and the beginning of a capital project budget in Year Two of 3.5 million, for a total of five point, almost 5.3 million from Measure A. That, Mr. President, members of the Board, concludes the staff presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And again, I know that there are a number of comments from the public.
Any questions from the Board members? Supervisor Grum?
I have one question on the Resource Specialist Manager. Once this is approved and once the hiring process, do we have an idea of how long that will take and what kind of qualifications and all of that kind of HR stuff?
Let me comment on the length of time, and I'll ask Mr. Holland to comment on the qualifications for the position. The anticipation of Measure A funds will be that they will be a series of reports that come to the Board that if tentatively approved or approved as modified, will be consolidated into a final report before the budget. And obviously, we have to live within the approximately $60 million we anticipate Measure A. That approved plan then will be part of the budget that the Board will hear in September. And so, once the Board adopts that, assuming those positions are part of that, we would anticipate being able to move forward with hiring that position. If there's a strong indication from the Board that that position is likely to be approved, we can queue up the hiring process so that once the budget is adopted in September, there would be a list available and ready to go, and that person, once selected, could start right away. And I'll ask the qualifications from Mr. Holland.
Yeah, once we put it out, we'll look at, we'll do a full search for folks that have the biological background that we need where we're managing open space and stewardship programs. And I don't think there's going to be any problem with getting people interested that are well qualified to do the job.
And it'd also be a higher level of management position as well?
Yes. This would be a staff, and we'd have to look at a salary range to be, bring in the kind of talent we'd be looking for. But there are a lot of folks coming out of school right now that have those skills.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pine?
Just to follow up on that point, I'm glad Supervisor Grum raised it in terms of the timing. And, you know, I would certainly be supportive of the idea of getting the recruitment process going and filling the position, you know, as soon as the funds were appropriated. And in fact, in fact, I think it might make sense, and I'd hear others comment, of course, that perhaps on all these, but there's not that many positions that we're seeking for the Parks, because I like, I like that approach, because I think that, you know, ultimately, the operating budget will, you know, need to be expanded beyond what's recommended today, but it doesn't make any sense to do that until we have the new Parks Director and really look at the operation model. But it seems to me that we're so far behind the eight ball that, you know, we really need these people. And it's been, you know, my observation that it just takes so long to get these people, you know, in the saddle. And I just wonder, you know, whether we ought to just start on these, on the group of positions.
I would certainly support that.
As do I. Supervisor Tessier?
Well, I was just going to say, because we don't have the Measure A budget in the budget yet, I guess what we're talking about for the first year, anyway, is a Parks Director, Executive Secretary, and then Natural Resource Manager. So you're looking at five positions in the first year and two positions later on, if I'm reading that correctly. Well, no, you got 13, 14, I'm sorry, I misread that. Okay. Because I was going to say that's for the Devil's Slide. I would, I would be interested in us starting to go out for maybe not all of them, because we want to be sure that all ends up in the budget, because we need to see all of Measure A. But I would be inclined to, in order to get anything really moving, you really need a Director. And I would suggest if we went out for the Director, the Natural Resource Manager, obviously the Executive Secretary, and the two Rangers, just to start off, just for the recruitment purposes, because I don't think we can do the rest of the program without it. So if we don't have at least that, we can't really get going. So I would suggest that we, we go out for at least the first five positions so that we can just get the recruitment. Because what's going to happen, those extra two Rangers, when you go out for the first recruitment, you're going to have so many people that you could probably go back to that same list if you want to bring the other two on after the actual budget gets approved. So that, I would be in favor of something on that order.
Supervisor Shloka?
Just a couple of things. Thank you, Mr. President. Just wondering, I like the idea of getting going also, but just would bring up this question or comment. Maybe Mr. Holland or Mr. Malby could respond, but is there any wisdom to letting the new Director sort of analyze requirement, business requirements, and then make the decision about whether it's a Ranger Three or a Ranger Two? Maybe the idea would be, you know, you set aside that pool of money, but the new Director sort of gets to decide what that mix might be? And it's just a question.
Through the President to Supervisor Shloka. We think that these seven positions are probably going to be the basic positions that need, the Department needs, that Director's going to take a look at and generally, everyone will agree with. We think beyond that, then, the Director's input can be quite helpful in shaping the future direction of the Parks and how they're operated, and the nature of future staffing requests that the Board will see. But we think these are pretty much the starter set, the basic ones that we need.
Okay. Thank you. And just one other question. I'm just curious, Mr. Holland's perspective on the salary for the Parks Director, is that a, I have no idea about salaries for Parks Director, but with the salary that's in the materials, is that a salary that's going to allow us to attract the kind of leader that San Mateo County would want?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's, it'll be very attractive. I don't think, and I think at a national level, actually, as long as they don't check housing prices, will be pretty competitive. No, it's a, it's a good salary.
Thank you. Yes, Supervisor Tessier?
I just had one quick question on the implementation plan. Some clarification when it says here, "Complete the Habitat Conservation Plan Amendment." What amendment? Is there something coming up as another amendment that's due?
This is San Bruno Mountain.
Right. I'm just, I was kind of surprised by that. Usually, I mean, we did an amendment a couple of years ago, but is there another amendment coming forward? It says, "Complete Habitat Conservation Plan Amendment." And it says, "Completion of the plan will allow for implementation of the San Bruno Mountain Master Plan." So is it when they make any changes to their master plan, it has to come back to us as an amendment to the HCP?
Yes, it would.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Right. Sorry. Supervisor Pine?
Yes. Just one further, further comment. You know, one thing that I think we're all, you know, very cognizant of is that, you know, we're going to see a whole series of presentations on Measure A, so it's, you know, it's hard to, you know, basically, we can't definitively do, you know, we'd be careful when we definitively commit to something. You know, we're also making a tentative commitment to, we're making a tentative commitment to a substantial capital improvement. You know, if it, I hope that this will make it through all the way to the end, but, you know, if, if we got tight, you know, that would probably reduce there, not, you know, not on the seven, not on the seven staff. So, you know, I guess I defer to County Manager, whether you think, how many people we should go out and get, but I, it's hard for me to imagine we would back off the seven, you know, the seven hires.
We think for the first year, that's a reasonable recommendation. And again, we could begin the recruitment for the key positions pending final approval for the Board, so that Board budget hearings are the middle of September, assuming they're approved, people can be hired and available to go in October.
And I just want to make sure, I mean, just make sure that Supervisor Tessier, if that works for you.
I'm fine. I mean, I think we're going to get a, quite a wide pool of people, so whether we feel at the time we want five or seven, I think we have a pool that we could do either one.
We would also anticipate bringing to the Board a contract to have an interim Director start right away to get, get the Department up and organized as we recruit for the permanent Director. So that would be probably the next, assuming the Board approves this, the next action the Board will be receiving at your first meeting in May.
We have a number of speakers on this. I just want, just a comment, just quickly, that we did, Supervisor Pine and I have worked on this for a long time with the Park Commission. The Park Commission, we held a joint hearing, and I have to commend the Parks Department for their strategic plan, actually, it's pretty detailed. And I view this, seven positions, really as a base, and I'm glad to see that we do, once we have an interim Director, we will open this potentially for Year Two plan, that there might be some enhancements to this as well. Because I do think this number of positions is really a base. It's a good starting point. So the first speaker is Perry Peterson, followed by... I'm sorry.
May I say something?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
Are we, I wanted to make a comment on strategic plan.
Oh, sure.
What I want to call out specifically and hope that our, the, and we, when we begin to implement this, is that we have an elevation of our friends' groups. They have some remarkable talent, and they are such a valuable addition to our, to our Parks. But I want to make sure that they, their positions are elevated into, and the new, the new team understands fully how valuable they are, and begin sort of a volunteer program to work with them more closely.
Good suggestion. Peter, oh, I'm sorry, Perry Peterson, followed by Bill Juisty.
Thank you, President Horsley and members of the Board. I'm glad to see that President Horsley and Supervisor Pine were at the Parks Commission meeting where the strategic plan was reviewed recently. You're obviously extremely energetically involved. I'm here today representing neighbors of Unipro Serra Park who have signed a petition, petition asking that there either be no disc golf or that it be substantially removed from the area of the residences. In fact, and I sent you a letter on this via email with a tremendous number of environmental attachments and the petition. In fact, disc golf and park habitats and environment are really dramatically in opposition to each other. Disc golf is a high-energy sport involving throwing a disc that oftentimes they venture erratically, and the noise and the tramping around the environment really hurts the park. The residents are concerned about it because it's going to disturb their peace and quiet. This petition was, came into being at the first time this was proposed in 2010. And I'm here to ask you to do something that I personally think is almost impossible, but I'll ask it anyway. I'd like you to approve the Park Strategic Plan, which I think is excellent, and the additional people is fabulous, especially the National, Natural Resource Position. But I'd like you to remove the possibility of disc golf at only Unipro Serra Park. It might, it might work out someplace. I appreciate your time very much.
Thanks, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you.
Bill Juisty, followed by Julia Bott.
Yes, thank you for letting me speak. I also sent a email to you last night regarding Unipro Serra County Park Disc Golf. It is in opposition to the habitat at the park. You can look at some of the video, some of the pictures that were attached showing what the disc does to a tree. I mean, it's almost like going out there with an axe, which I know would not be allowed by anybody in the park. So, that along, along with disrupting the wildlife, also trash that would be coming from the people that go there, excessive erosion of the landslide, things like that. I think it is in opposition to having disc golf in Unipro Serra County Park. So, as with Mr. Peterson, I suggest that if you approve the plan, that you remove that section for the park only. I think there's other parks it could go to, possibly Coyote Point, there's the Park Pacifica, but Unipro Serra County, I think, is, the county park is just too fragile to accept this type of sport. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Juisty. Julia Bott, followed by Lenny Roberts.
President Horsley, members of the Board, I'm Julia Bott with the San Mateo County Parks Foundation. We want to thank you for your continuing support for the San Mateo County Parks. They are a jewel in our community, and they're important for the whole community, well-loved and well-used by everyone from CEOs to custodians across the board in our community. Our parks are a part of people's lives. We really do support the, your commitment here to early recruitment so that these things can move along quickly. We appreciate the idea of an interim manager, Department Head, in order to facilitate that. The hiring of a Natural Resource Manager position is very critical to the well-being of the habitats and the health of the county park system. And we'll go a long way towards implementing a previous gift that we made of a vegetation management planning document, which is sort of like a dichotomous key, those keys you get where it says, "If the leaf is oval, then you go here." Well, this plan is the same way. If you find this situation, then these are your options, this is what you need to look at. It does take people with expertise to be able to interpret that and make a plan. So we're really happy that the Department will have additional expertise in addition to what the Rangers already have on the ground. And your commitment about volunteers really does go to my heart. The Department works well with volunteers now, and what is really critical is to have a Department Head who is his basic, or her basic DNA is a commitment to working with the community, and someone who embraces volunteers and sees them as a true value to the Department and the parks that we all love. Thank you.
Thanks, Julia. Lenny Roberts?
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the Board. I'm Lenny Roberts, and I'm speaking for Committee for Green Foothills, and I want to commend all the hard work that's gone into getting us to this point, and especially, I want to thank the voters again, because it's been the voters that have made this all possible, along with all the other critical county services that are going to benefit from the half-cent sales tax increase. So, and Julia has already said all the things that I was going, going to say. I do appreciate very much the County Manager and staff adding the new position of Natural Resources Manager. I think we can find some talented people who will be able to infuse the Department with that approach of making sure that our natural resources are at the forefront of decision-making in, in the Parks Department. And I just, this is a very major step, and thank you very much for helping the parks become more whole, and we look forward to working with you in the future on that. Thank you.
Supervisor Grum, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I meant to say this and got derailed by not thinking fast enough. I want to thank Jim Porter and his team for, I think, the really good job they did during this period. We did combine the two departments because we thought it would be a good savings, and it was a good financial savings, but some things just aren't, you know, just aren't meant to be. But in every park event that I've ever been to, Jim and his team have been there, and they've, they've helped make it all work, and I think they've done the best job they could, and I want to thank them. But I do think it's, I do am very, very supportive of having a separate park department once again.
Supervisor Pine, did you?
I just wanted to respond to the speakers concerning the disc golf. The San Bruno, Unipro Serra Park is in my district, and I appreciate them sending the materials on to us. I wasn't on the Board at the time when a proposal last came forward. There's no proposal today. You know, you may be absolutely right that there shouldn't be disc golf in that park, but I think it's difficult at this point, as we adopt the strategic plan, to kind of categorically rule it out or rule it in. You know, there are a lot of things, a lot of proposals in the strategic document, which are also controversial, trail bikes, dogs in parks, other things, you know, all of which, you know, we're going to have to carefully consider, and they may or may not make sense. So, so I, well, I think your concerns are well-articulated. I just think it's, at this juncture, I would prefer to not, not make... juncture, I would prefer to not make a decision, I think we'd have to look at the specific proposal.
And Supervisor Adrian?
Actually, I was going to respond to the same thing. We've got several things here that people expressed interest above and beyond what's in the strategic plan, and they include, as you mentioned, the disc golf course, dog parks, horseshoe pits, new mountain bike trails. I think what I'd like to see us do is, again, not specifically talk about Unipro Serra Park, but look at down the road whether any of these things would work in any of the parks, and do a full evaluation. So, I'd like us to go ahead with the strategic plan, but not sort of target Unipro Serra Park for the disc golf courses, but look at all these expressed interests and see if they fit anywhere in our park system, and since we have a very long list of things that need to be done first, I don't think we're going to add some of these things until we take care of some of the existing things that are taking place in our parks. So, I appreciate the concern, and I certainly will take a look at it. I am familiar with disc golf courses, there's one up in Tahoe, I've seen, I've never played it, it looks very difficult, I'd rather play the regular game myself, but anyway. I also wanted just to make a couple quick comments. I thought this strategic plan was great, you guys have done a tremendous job, same with Mr. Porter. Last year, I cut out an article in the paper that San, something San Francisco Park and REC had done, and they had, and you talk a lot in here about social media, and they had actually developed a, a company in their town developed an app where people could, it would let the users know where there's dog parks, hiking trails, playgrounds, they could go online and, and, you know, look for reservations for picnic tables and things. So, I do hope over time that we too, with all this social media, can come up with things like that, so it would make it easier for people to use our parks and enjoy our parks. So, I just found that very interesting, it was actually a company in San Francisco that did it at no cost, came up with this app, because they wanted to, they felt the government moved a little too slow, and they wanted the city to have these tools. So, I've actually kept the name of the company too, so we might want to take a look at it and see if, you know, if there's something we can do that would make us in the 21st century as it relates to our parks and usability.
In the 21st century, finally?
Yep.
Great. Supervisor Slocum, do you have any comments?
I would just like to thank Supervisor Pine and Supervisor Horsley for your work on this plan. I think that our parks, being a frequent visitor, and when the kids were little, often user of Memorial Park, they are an important resource, improve the quality of life here for all of us, and I think the strategic plan is pretty solid, and I like the idea of coming back to those uses, like the dog parks and so forth and so on. And echoing Supervisor Groom's comments, I too would thank Mr. Porter for the work he and his staff have done in the past, and the work that they will do during the transition of the new Parks Department. So, thank you to Mr. Porter and his staff.
Well, I too spend a lot of time in the parks, especially when my kids were younger, at Hutter Park and Memorial Park, they really are a fantastic resource for us. And I'd also like to thank Director Jim Porter, as well as Deanna Haskell, who actually helped us put together this strategic plan, she did a great job. It's very comprehensive, it's a lot of work, it's kind of, we're going to look forward to our interim director actually implementing those steps. It's a lot of work, and I think it's going to really pay off in the long run for us. Do we, we now have to approve this?
The recommendations before you in the transmittal are A through D, which include the approval of the park strategic plan, the direction to staff to include seven additional positions in the proposed budget, etc.
Now, I see it here. Okay. Yes, Supervisor Pine?
Just a, just a final, final comment. You know, I, you know, too want to thank Jim Porter for his leadership. He's done a fine job with our Parks Department. So, I think this is a really historic point for our parks, in that, you know, the board and the county is committed, and the voters are committed to seeing a reinvigorated parks system, and so, you know, today, or with the new budget, we'll be solidly heading in that direction. I think the reestablishment of a standalone Parks Department is really critical, just to help keep focus on the parks, and also to present an outward face for the parks. I think the person we hire ultimately, you know, has to be very visible cheerleader, someone who's going to work with the GDNRA's and all the posts, and, you know, develop partnerships. So, that can happen with a standalone Parks Department. I've made some other comments, the only other one I'll make at this point is, in the fiscal plan, towards the end, there's a section called Fiscal Management, which I did want to just highlight, and it just points out that, you know, we're, our parks are, this funding is still very vulnerable, when you look at it over the long term, you know, we're still the only county park system that doesn't have a dedicated revenue stream. So, the goal's towards the back, you know, you know, call out the need that, you know, we're going to have to think about the long-term fiscal health of the parks, and how can we do some things, you know, differently that may be more efficient. Supervisor Tissier had a great suggestion, and there are many others. So, while we are reinvigorating our park system, we do have to, you know, do some things differently, and keep in mind that, you know, it's still a tenuous situation without a dedicated source of revenue, but very exciting to be at this stage.
Just one question, Mr. Balti, the 3.5 million capital project, that does not include devil's lie, I understand, as I understand it, or does it?
It does.
It does, okay. Okay, in that case, then, can I have a motion to...
So moved. Can we take all three, four together? Okay, I'd like to make that motion, A, B, C, and D on the parks.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A roll call vote.
Supervisor Pine?
Aye.
Supervisor Groom? Yes. Supervisor Slocum?
Aye.
Supervisor Tissier?
Aye.
President Horsley?
Aye.
Can I ask one quick question? Will that include moving forward in putting out, doing the interim as well as looking for those positions?
Yes.
Because I didn't say it in there.
Well, the interim, I will bring a contract back to the board next meeting.
Oh, this is great, this is exciting, actually, we worked on this for well over a year, so, great. Thank you for your support on that. Next is the county managers' report.
Mr. President, members of the board, my report this morning, I wanted to give you an update on the web redesign project. On March 12th, the board approved an agreement with Phase Two Technology to complete our web redesign and Drupal content management system. As the board may recall, we're replacing the existing vignette content management system with Drupal. This is to create a site that is easier to use, navigate, and maintain. Phase Two Technology will be meeting with the departments beginning today, and get their thoughts regarding the new system. This effort is going to require approximately 12 to 18 months to complete. The board will have an opportunity to provide input on the design and functionality of the website a little later in the process, and a contract for hosting the website with IKEA will be coming to the board in June. This organization offers cloud housing and professional services for Drupal users. We're also have been actively using the MindMixer, SpeakOut, or SMCSpeakout.com. We, the first extensive use was to get input regarding the Measure A priorities, which have been given to the board. Among those priorities, of course, was to emphasize preschool, after-school libraries, homework centers for children and teens, parks, and also transit were among the top We're now using the MindMixer to engage people around parks. Visitors to the website can add a photo of their favorite county park and/or nominate a trail for Take a Hike, and folks are doing that now. We've also hired a new policy innovation and engagement fellow, Asia Bettencourt McCarthy, who will be working with us for the next year or two with respect to online engagement and social media, and we're very excited about the expanded use of those opportunities. Also, in regarding the budget, I wanted to give you a quick update, that our first round of meetings with the departments have been completed. We have a number of, I think, very engaged departments that are embracing both the concepts of the agile organization, as well as gearing up for such important activities as the ACA implementation, and the construction and eventually opening of the new jail. You will see staffing requests around all of those issues in the budget. In addition, we're working with probation, the district attorney, and the sheriff's department to create a research analysis unit to better organize and analyze criminal justice information in this county. I think the board, on a number of occasions, has expressed some frustration with the manner and the timing of that information now, and we hope to be able to provide much more timely and accurate and better information going forward with this new unit that will also be involved in the budget. In addition to that, we have been working with Public Works and with the Information Services Department to redesign their service charges and work with the departments, you will see that in the budget this year, as well as a number of requests for major IT projects and capital improvements beyond the parks. And finally, we will be working with parks, and you will see a budget proposal built around the more expeditious completion of capital projects, and the process and the staffing by which that can be accomplished. So, those are some of the major highlights of the discussions with the departments on the budget, we're going through a second round in a week or so, and then we'll begin to actually prepare the budget to be delivered to the board at the end of July. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, next, item number 10, but before I do, I just want to acknowledge Mary Ann Moise Derwin, councilwoman from the town of Portola Valley, has joined us today in the back. Hello, Mary Ann. Next is item number 10, is a resolution honoring, or establishing the honorary post of poet laureate for San Mateo County and the creation of the San Mateo County Poet Laureate Inaugural Advisory Committee to administer the process to select a nominee for board appointment to the post, Supervisors Slocum and Carol Groom.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you mentioned, the resolution seeks to create the honorary post of poet laureate for San Mateo County. Just would mention that several other Bay Area counties and cities have poet laureates, among those being San Francisco, Marin County, Napa, Sonoma, Alameda, and Santa Clara counties. As envisioned, we thought of the benefits of the poet laureate program to include, for instance, the poet laureate, San Mateo County's poet laureate, if approved, could hold public meetings and readings in libraries, getting kids engaged in poetry and literacy, participate in civic events, and lead community projects and school events to elevate the role of poetry in our community. We thought that generally the idea of establishing a poet laureate would elevate poetry in the arts and get people excited about everyday moments, and finally, we thought, we imagined that perhaps our, one of our board meetings each month could be opened with a poem from the county's poet laureate, if approved. And I would just like to thank Marcy Dragon of my staff, who really did a lot of work on this, and also, I would thank the members of the art community, some of whom are here, and after, assuming we approve the resolution, I would like to take just a minute after that to read the names of the poet laureate committee that have been assembled. I think you'll be impressed with some of the names there too, but let me just introduce to you first Julie Fellers, who is here, and maybe you could introduce who you're with there. Could you come up to the podium?
Good morning. I'm Julie Fellers, president of the Peninsula Arts Council, and we are pleased to be part of this process that Supervisor Slocum has initiated, and thank you, Carol Groom, for also being on board with this poet laureate program. May I introduce the other two who are here as well? We've got Don Mulliken, he is an arts commissioner for San Mateo County, serving Dave Pine's district, and Bardi Rossman Kudrin, she is the literary arts director at the San Mateo County Fair, and she is also one of the members on this proposed inaugural committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Also, Mary Ann Moise is in the back there, Derwin, and she's a member of the committee also. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I would also be happy to make a motion for you all to consider the approval of the poet laureate program and establishing the committee of Supervisor Groom and myself, and appreciate your attention to all this poetry this morning. Thank you.
Very enlightening day.
Very enlightening.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for...
Thank you.
Glad, as long as I don't have to write a poet or poem once a month.
I haven't thought of that, but maybe that's coming. Let me just take a moment if I could, Marcy has done an amazing job at assembling this committee, and I'd like to just read the names. First of all, Professor Juan Felipe Herrera, who's the California poet laureate, is on our committee. Calmoo...
Tashay.
Tashay, yes, thank you. East Palo Alto poet laureate is here. Anne Marie, the county librarian, Julie Fellers, as mentioned, Mary Gutierrez, Clark Kepler from, what's Kepler's books, in Menlo Park, Bardi Rossman, is it Kudrin? Library coordinator at the San Mateo County Fair, Mary Ann, council member from Portola Valley, Donald Mulliken, San Mateo County Arts Commissioner, Christopher Walklin, president of California Writers Club, San Francisco Peninsula Branch, Mark Walter Beek, Chair of the English Department at Notre Dame in Belmont, and Bonnie Zanardi, columnist with the Mercury News. So, that's, that's our committee. I think it's a pretty amazing stellar group of people, and thank again Marcy and my staff for doing all that work related to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, it's a very impressive committee. Next are board members' reports. Did you want to start, Supervisor Slocum, you have a report?
Aye.
I tabled them.
Thank you, I have no report.
Supervisor Tessier?
Yes, I have several adjourned memories. The first one is Virginia Ginny Aguilera, she passed away at the age of 84. She was a native San Franciscan and a longtime resident of Daly City. She graduated from Ball Bowl High School, she is survived by her children Paul and Janet, and if some of you remember, she was a staff member to Bill Schumacher for many years, and she retired from San Mateo County. Her big passions were cooking and trips to Reno, so she will be sorely missed, she was a neighbor on the block I grew up on. My second adjourned memory is Leo Pedretti, he was the San Mateo County Harbor Commissioners' Vice President and former South San Francisco Mayor. He died this past week at the age of 83. He joined the Harbor District in 1997, when he was appointed to fill a vacancy. He is, was a lifelong South San Francisco resident, who spent more than 30 years in public service, including four years on the South San Francisco City Council. He also served nine years on the South San Francisco School Board, and also served on the San Mateo County Fair Board, as well as having 32 years of city and state law enforcement experience, including FBI training at the California Highway Patrol Academy, and as an alcohol beverage control investigator. He is survived by his wife, son, and stepson, and he will be sorely missed in the community. My third adjourned memory is Selma Reba, she resided in San Francisco and Daly City from 1949 to 2010. She was a registered nurse, she had graduated from Women's College in 1945, she was an award-winning artist, a signature member of the Society of Western Artists, a member of the Daly City Visual Arts Guild, and past president of Nob Hill Branch of the National League of American Pen Women. Her works are in private collections in Canada, Australia, Great Britain, and throughout the United States. She was preceded in death by her husband, Dr. George Reba. She was a great member of our Daly City community, and she will be sorely missed. Another Daly City resident, Paul Huff, he was born in Buffalo, New York, he was a Marine and... He was a Marine, seagoing Marine in World War II. He graduated from USF Law School and served as a lawyer as a career for 60 years. He was also a judge of the Municipal Court in South San Francisco and served as a member and presiding referee of the State Bar Court. He was very active in our parish, Our Lady Mercy. He was also chaired the Pastoral Council of the Archdiocese in 1968. He was a National Council of Catholic Men. He's also served as a Daly City Councilman, Acting City Manager, and City Attorney. I don't think he did it all at once, but in different years. And he also served on the Board of Trustees of Dominican College. He is survived by his wife Sharon and her children Michael, Elizabeth, Catherine, and Christine, and he will also be sorely missed. And I have one last adjourned memory for Ruth Sleeper. She passed away at the age of 92. She was the wife of the late Ray Sleeper. She was a mother of Anne, Sue, Joe, and Phil Sleeper. She will be sorely missed by her friends and family. Thank you.
Supervisor Groom?
Thank you, President, thank you, President Horsley. I wanted to honor Joanne Bracco, who was a longtime Samitean. She worked on the staff of Peninsula Parent. She began a syndicated column on movies that kids and parents could enjoy together. She, after that, started her own magazine, Parenting on the Peninsula. And she was an author, a good family person, but really did a lot in terms of, with her two publications, in terms of opening up childcare centers and talking about reviewing arts programs and doing lots of things so that families could kind of know where to go. I'd also like to ask us to remember Josephine Jo Di Martino, longtime Samiteo resident. She was a, many, many years a volunteer for Samaritan House. She was honored with service awards in '03, '11, and '12 for her dedicated work to Samaritan House. And lastly, I'd like to adjourn a member of Barry Oberstein, longtime Peninsula, 40, 50-year Peninsula physician, very active in medical ethics, very active in the Peninsula Jewish Community Center. Had a, his daughter also practices medicine with, went medicine with him, and he was a great contributor to the medical community.
Supervisor Pine, do you have a report?
Yes, I, first, I have an adjourned memory of Barkiv Kivarian, who passed away on Wednesday, April 17th, at the age of 82. Mr. Kivarian was resident of South San Francisco. He was born in Aleppo, Syria, in 1930, and emigrated to the United States in 1976 with his family. He worked for Diana's Italian American Bakery in San Francisco. And then from 1980 to 98, he had his own business on Broadway in Burlingame called Harold's Shoe Repair. He's survived by his wife, his son John, who runs Nuts for Candy on Broadway, his daughter, and six grandchildren. Also, just wanted to share that I had a chance to accompany one of, one of our restaurant inspectors for some restaurant tours. It was most, most interesting. Joan Jaren was the inspector, and I was just very impressed with the quality of her work and the actual relationship she has, you know, built with the restaurant owners that she visits. So, you know, one thing that was really striking was, you know, how hard she's trying to kind of, you know, help these owners, you know, meet the standards. And it wasn't, it wasn't, it didn't have any sense of like a heavy enforcement action. It was really more of, you know, she was just working with them and she knows them, and it takes a lot of people skills to do that kind of job, and I thought she did it extremely, extremely well. It was certainly interesting for me to, to see that small part of the county's operations.
Thanks, Supervisor Pine. After, I made a, I forgot, I overlooked, there was a request for Barty Fox to speak on item 10. So I'm gonna let you speak on item 10. You also had something on item 11 as well, so if you want to take both at the same time. Sorry that I overlooked that.
Yes, I, thank you very much, President Horsley, and thank you Supervisor Groom. The road less traveled has a special meaning for many of us who served in the military. We're a distinct minority, and we've traveled some of that road, and we know what it's like, and so it's, it speaks to us very directly. Please adjourn in memory of a 65-year-old Vietnam veteran, Michael Kelly, who struggled with bipolar disorder, post-traumatic stress, and heart disease before he passed away on Christmas afternoon. He was a talented artist who had been grievously wounded in Vietnam. He raised the funds to build the California Vietnam Veterans Memorial in the 1980s and helped other veterans. He worked for Sacramento County for many years before he retired, and then developed a palsy in his hands, so he couldn't draw anymore. He began suffering delusions, and those delusions may have caused him to walk into the dark of his backyard and hang himself from a beam on his deck. He is just one of the many baby boomers who happen to be veterans, who have contributed to the grim rise of suicide amongst not only the baby boomer population, but the veterans. Please keep us who travel that road less traveled in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. I just have one adjourned memory of Mae Louise Allen Mays. She was the wife of Willie Mays. Willie Mays, we all know him, he was probably the, I think, the greatest ball player who ever lived, and started with the San Francisco Giants and later in the, that is, the New York Giants and San Francisco Giants. Fortunately, had the privilege of seeing him play and actually meeting him on occasion. He has done some work with the Sheriff's Department recently, and actually has gone into jail and talked to prisoners. So he's a great local hero, resource, valued person, and his wife was as well. Any case, she waged a 16-year battle with Alzheimer's disease, and she did remain in the family home with Willie until she died this Friday. Willie was a great person, and his wife is a wonderful soulmate as well, and she will be missed. Other report I'd like to make is that I did attend the Progress Seminar, and of course, as the President of the Board have to make a state of the county speech, and went fine. Well, I guess.
Yes, you did.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you did.
It, we sort of contrasted what it was at like 1913 versus 2013, and where we've, where, where we've, the past and the present, and where we can go in the future. But they had some really fabulous seminars this time. One of the persons that was there was Diana Dooley, who is the Secretary of California Health and Human Services Agency, and I know Supervisor Malt, not Supervisor, you didn't get elected yet, but John Maltby, the County Manager, and I both attended. She is, that is, I think she's really very well-versed in the subject, and we had a few questions. But I thought it was really helpful to understand what the state is planning for the future. And there's a couple of other ones, but the one that was really fascinating is called, "Oh My God, They Are Here," and it's engaging Generation X, Y, and Z. Really very interesting panel that talked about the fact that, you know, what we really have to have is the housing for young people. If we want to be able to keep young people here, we're gonna have to do more in housing. And the other thing is the outreach for younger people isn't done in traditional ways. It's really through the newer modalities of Facebook, Twitter, however we can communicate with them, that's extremely important. It also talks about the demographics of San Mateo County that, if we didn't already know it, the county is getting older. So if we're gonna do something, if we're gonna attract those younger people, we have to do it now, because in the future, we're, we're, we're gonna be dominated by older people and the problems that older people have. So it's a fascinating presentation. So it was one of the best I've ever seen in the Progress Seminar. That concludes my report, and now we will adjourn to closed session. Okay, we are now back from closed session. Could you, Mr. Byers, could you report on the outcome of closed session?
Yes, thank you, President Horsley. The Board met in closed session to consider one, one litigation matter, which is identified on the agenda, and it was an update only. There was no action taken.
Thank you, Mr. Byers. The Board will now adjourn.